We are back in session. First item as usual is audience sharing. Anyone have anything to share? We'll move on to new business then, and starting with the Master Plan Committee update. Robert Challen is our representative on the Master Plan Committee as an update.
All right. The 2008 Master Plan is really what the town has as far as its most recent Master Plan. So it's, what, 11 years old? It's a several hundred-page document. It's got well over 100 line items of recommendations. Includes years I think you would expect economic development, land use, housing, open space, recreation, various resources, natural resources, cultural resources, historic resources, transportation. I'm sorry I used that word.
I'm sorry Roger, what did you say?
Municipal facilities, technology, et cetera. I don't want to say surprisingly because the Master Plan's not something that I was involved with. You know, I've been involved in a lot of different things. But very few recommendations of those 100 line items have actually been implemented. So this committee, which is not small, it's about 22 people on this committee, and as anybody that's been on large committees, which I have recently in addition to this, know that they're hard to manage. But I think the folks that are managing this particular committee, and it's early on, and within a couple of meetings are doing actually a very good job. It was formed to really take this 2008 plan to the next level. Challenge is, what does that mean? What does the next level mean? What's the definition of the next level? What's the goal, you know, for the next level? So it's going to be a large project, whatever direction is actually taken. So, so far what the committee has done is it's reviewed all the items in the 2008 Master Plan and identified progress to date in all these areas. At the last meeting we really, I think, performed a significant amount of work involved in that. Split up into four groups, and each group had somewhere around a quarter of the items. And I know in our group, which was actually, I thought, a pretty strong group, and I think all of them were, I actually had both of the Board of Selectmen liaisons. I had, you know, that's Bonnie and Lisa Raccio. Sam was on it, Sam Stivers, Matthew Probst from the Technology Committee, and Kathy Barlini, who was from the Economic Development Group, but she's got a lot of experience in regional planning. So we went through each item, and all these groups are doing this, identified what was implemented completely, what was in progress. We even tried to put percentages on them. Is it 20% done, 50% done? What's not started? What's just not applicable anymore? Because this was 11 years ago. And there were some new things that people thought of that weren't on it at all, we made note of that. And each group then shared the results of their analysis with all the other groups. There, I haven't seen the overall compilation of all the results. That's going to be distributed, but it's not out yet. So, second thing we did was, as I said before, try to define maybe what some of these plan outcomes would be when we take this to the next level. And let me refer you to, I guess, the second and third page of the handout. Really, you can go to the third page, which I'm not looking at, which actually identifies three outcomes. Basically, one outcome is simply to try to deliver, since very little is delivered so far, what that 2008 plan included. The second outcome is to build or enhance on that, and not just, and not just deliver what's there, add some areas. And the third outcome is really expand the entire scope of it to create more of a community-wide plan. Now, I want you to note one thing on the third outcome, because I'll speak to that in a minute when I talk about kind of school committee. The third outcome is specific in its identifying that it wants to broaden the scope to include schools. Well, I guess by that statement you can kind of understand that the 2008 plan really And I will come back to that. So we talked about these broad potential outcomes, and then we voted which outcomes each of us, you know, we even felt was the realistic one to set as the goal. If you look at the bottom of that handout, where it talks about outcome number one, outcome number two, number three, you can see that no one felt that simply delivering the 2008, on the 2008 plan was their choice. By a small margin, but nonetheless still a margin, the outcome number three was really the majority vote, which was to broaden the plan. That's a, that's a big task. And one of my concerns voiced it at the meeting was, you know, if you try to take on tasks that are too large, they never get done. I mean, case in point, right? But nonetheless, a little over half the folks felt that that was a worthy goal. We also allowed people to not have to pick one. They could pick a combination. And you see down at the bottom where some folks said, "Well, why don't we do a combination of one and two?" So that was the closest we got to anybody choosing one. And I actually felt myself that a combination of two and three made sense. Not necessarily bite off a huge project, but clearly there were some things, you know, in the third outcome that made sense to pay attention to in maybe updating the plan. So, let's talk about, and then we agreed that we would bring, we would bring this back to the committee, to our respective committees, for some discussion. I honestly don't think that there's a lot to go on just yet, but in a minute I'm going to invite, ask any questions you might have that I could take back. As I said before, the 2008 plan really does not include schools or some other town services, in fact. I actually reviewed every one of those 110 some-line items. Not only were schools not one of the eight or nine areas, but I couldn't even find a word "schools" in any of the 100 items. I could have missed one, but you get the idea. Now, I don't think it's being, I don't think schools are being ignored, I just think that a specific role or, you know, kind of part of the plan was never defined. Bonnie actually made a point of asking me if I thought that there were, there were anything that I felt the schools would want to include. And I really told her that at this point in time I didn't have an answer to that question. But I appreciated the fact that she made a point of, maybe because she was in my group when I was there, but she made a point of asking a question. I think they, even though there's, I think schools are separate, but I think they need to be a part of the overall plan, there are certainly some areas, whether it's infrastructure or building or technology, that I think it makes sense. And I think that this committee will be asked to at least, to the degree it chooses, to take a stand on what part of the Master Plan we think are critical as far as schools are concerned, and maybe even how, how we should participate, how schools should be integrated into the plan. I, I need more detail myself to probably formulate my own answer to those questions. I suspect you may also, but that's what I have so far. Open to questions, comments, if there are any? I promise to keep this under an hour and a half.
Any questions, comments? I mean, I guess my gut reaction is a town Master Plan that doesn't include schools at all isn't much of a town Master Plan, but on the other hand, I mean, the school committee has to sign off on almost anything, so, but.
Roger, can I ask a question for clarification?
Absolutely.
So about six years ago, and I don't even know if this still exists in the form that it was, the format that it was when it did an extensive presentation to the town, they formed the Essence of an Economic Development Committee about six years ago. In fact, Dan Kalenda, I think, was a part of that.
When you say the essence, is that, is that basically?
That was the first.
Has that grown into the current EDC?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so the document they produced at that point in time, and the presentation that we were all invited to, to attend, was quite impressive and extensive. And at that point, and I believe they engaged the Economic Development Department of now Framingham State University, as well as one of the Boston Colleges, to do the developmental work. And there, in that presentation, and I think we might even still have the document at Central, schools were very much a key part of that conversation, and oftentimes were referred to in the day-long presentation of the work. And St. Mark's was also referenced in that work. So I'm, I'm wondering, we are referring to 2008, a 2008 document, was that work considered in this part of the conversation moving forward? It was an impressive document. Schools were highlighted as one of the reasons why people come to Southborough to, you know, enjoy not only the quality of living in the town, but also the strong school system. So I don't, was there any discussion about reviewing that?
Well, the direct answer is no. And to my knowledge, so there's no discussion about that, about that plan, and no any discussion about what you described was in that.
Yeah, there was a lot of forecasting about.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, yeah, I don't, so I, so again, I don't know, sounds like that, at least it would have made sense to integrate that in part, if you will, into the 2008 plan, but, you know, no structure to do it, right? That's sometimes what happens is, these are, these are sensible enhancements, but no committee or no structure, and, you know, to really go back and integrate those things, so.
Was it, was it presented as another document for discussion when the 2008 plan was reviewed? Because this would have been 2014 maybe? And it really was about forecasting out the town of Southborough's growth?
It's not in any of the documents I have, and I've got hundreds of pages. We're enlisting a consultant. I left some of my notes in my office, because I was looking at this again today. M A, is it M, M A P C? And there were a lot of line items associated with economic developments. You know, if you take a look at, you know, the eight or nine or so areas I mentioned, one is data collection. Well, it wasn't very, wasn't very long. There were probably 12 pages of, you take 100 items, and a couple of those, economic development was disproportionate, not necessarily in importance, but certainly in, in others, it had more line items than a lot of, lot of others than maybe it should have. We didn't get involved in, you know, in that, but it's, it's great you pointed that out, because I'll go back and try to find that out.
Yeah, I think we still have a copy of it. I'm sure someone on the town side has it as well, but I think we still, we have a copy of it at Central along with the PowerPoint, because it was pretty extensive.
I think Kathy would have it, and also some other folks might have it also, so.
Well-attended. I think there were about 100 people at the presentation that was held at St. Mark's, and they did, they had a lot of demographic analysis of future growth of Southborough, what the build-out possibilities were, you know, and the schools were represented in that.
Well, I found it very interesting. These outcomes that you see on the, I guess it's the third page, the second page of content, this committee didn't create the outcomes. I think the consultant or the, or the leadership did, but I think it's, it's telling that only in the third outcome are schools mentioned, and it says "to include schools." So, you know, there you go. It's an admission that schools really weren't, aren't included in the plan. If you simply refreshed it, they wouldn't be there, and if you did an update, a comprehensive update, they aren't there. So, I'll take that back, I'll try to find that out.
So we're going through that in another district, very much aligned with ours, and the schools were interviewed for about two days as part of the survey process, identification of what we needed, what we saw on the horizon for our needs.
Well, I think no matter what happens, schools will be included, even if it's simply, let's take outcome two, but add some things. Right.
Is there a timeframe for this, like how far in the future it's going to be looking?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. Probably the best way I can respond is, it probably depends on the scope of, you know, what that next level looks like. Clearly, it will take more time to deal with outcome three, or make that a reality, than one of the others.
I'm thinking at the very least you want to include the, our capital plan, the long-term capital plan.
Facilities capital, yep. And I don't honestly know, I couldn't attend the organizational meeting, but I don't honestly know if this committee has a defined timeframe or like, you know, or like a number of that committees it kind of was, and then gets reappointed, you know, whether this is a three-year committee, or one year, and then it's reviewed every year. I think to get through, you know, I think, we're trying to meet a couple times a month, so we're going to try to move through it. I don't know what the timeframe is.
Okay.
Yeah, it is interesting, because I'm looking at the 2008 Master Plan online, and in all the sections, there's nothing about schools.
Didn't believe me, huh?
No, but I do believe you.
There's confirmation, there's confirmation that I didn't miss something. This is, this is good, okay?
But, you know, it is, it's land use, housing, economic development, open space, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, I do find it kind of amazing that there is.
Well, I, I didn't actually go through the Master Plan itself and do a word search for the word, okay? But I had, but I actually had, as I say, the 110 line items of recommendations, all those recommendations, and I, and I looked at all of them, and, you know, you say, I could miss one, but even if, even if there was one, I wouldn't say.
Well, line item probably doesn't do injustice, even if you did miss a line item.
And some of the line items were even kind of summary line items, so there are probably 110 line items that made, some of those were, you know, had subcategories below them, so maybe there was, maybe there was 120 or 130, but these were, these were recommendations that, well under 10% of those, if any, it might even be a lot more well under 10%. Because I only saw my group's detail, and I haven't actually seen the compilation of everyone yet, you know, I couldn't tell you how it, how it actually came out in the end for all of the groups together.
So do you have what you need from us at this point?
So far, you know, I think that when we are able to crystallize a little bit better some of the things that people want back from the committees, it'd be a little easier, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the NAREY School Improvement Plan update. We have a presentation.
So, I'm excited and I'm going to be able to show you the great work that we're doing at the NAREY Commission to our 2008 and 2011 school improvement. And to begin, I think the retiree and her staff, we want your stay continued for their collective commitment to our goals. Our school president, there's our new Collins, she'll come again, we're blaming, and our teacher representatives, Lisa D'Souza, Rebecca Lurin, Heather Setzko, and Kenton, our colleagues. So our first goal is the NAREY School Support Children in Affair as necessary to recognize and manage their emotions, demonstrate empathy for others, establish positive relationships in responsible decisions, and constructively navigate challenging social situations through social curriculum and best instructional practices. And this plan was presented to the Settlers' Committee on February 14th of last year.
So our first focus area was student support services, and it's connected to Vision 2020 Indicator One. And our targeted areas for this year, 2018, 2019 areas for improvement began with one social thinking, which is connection to Michelle Garcia's work, and with our speech and language pathologist, Michelle Miller. Michelle Miller, she provided professional development for staff on social thinking, and this helps students to develop their social competencies to better connect with their peers. The frameworks and strategies to help individuals develop their social thinking and social skills help them to achieve personal social goals. And a focus on common language and strategies, which is carried over into the classroom, and skill-targeted lunch bunching groups. During academic extensions, which align with our professional learning communities, one per grade level each week, also provide five weeks of instruction to our students. So it's all interconnected, and the targeted areas for the students during those five weeks are social awareness, perspective-taking, theory of mind, self-regulation, executive functioning, and social and emotional understanding. The second targeted area was our visit on March 29th, part of our Professional Development Day for staff, where we were, Dr. Elizabeth Englander joined us from Bridgewater State University in connection to her Program Mass Aggression Reduction Center, where she trained our staff on bullying and cyberbullying, and including digital behaviors and social media use. The second half of that day, we were, we engaged in a hands-on workshop with Brainfoot Academy, which covered the theoretical and practical aspects of brain gym, and the staff, our NAREY staff learned and experienced several brain gym exercises to fully understand their functional applications and how to best bring that into the classrooms. And our Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, which is our PBIS, during one of our other Professional Development Days, a guiding coalition of NAREY staff and administration worked to develop a school-wide PBIS resources, resource for staff to assist students in having a safe, positive learning environment. By providing consistency across all areas in our school, we were able to utilize FIN and Woodward systems as a guideline while aligning it to, to be developmentally appropriate for our fourth and fifth graders. Use, again, using common language and strategies as much as possible. And over the course of the next eight weeks, we will engage in some professional development with the staff, and the rollout will be within, in the new school year with our students. So our second area of focus is connected to Student Support Services, Indicator Four in Vision 2020. This is exciting. It's called M-Wave, and through a collaborative grant effort by SEF, and written by Woodward, NAREY, and Trotter's staff, we've been able to bring this innovative biofeedback program into our schools. So after months of teacher training, so we were able to purchase the program at the end of last year, and our teachers have engaged in professional development and training over the last six to seven months. And now at this point, small groups of NAREY students have begun using the program, and they're being exposed to different strategies that help them to become more aware of their feelings and the thoughts that come with them, while gaining a greater understanding of the connection between the brain and the heart. And they'll be able to learn to monitor their heart rhythms and learn to be more in sync using visuals on the computer screen, with goals being able to be transferred and the strategies transferred as they work in their small groups and on the M-Wave devices. So what it is, is it's a computer program, and there's a connector that's a sensor that either connects to the finger or the earlobe. And so students are just beginning to use this now, and every student works at their own pace, and the program difficulty can be increased as students become more proficient with the strategies that they're learning. So, another focus area and goal one's again connected to Student Support Services Indicator Three. We have our care program, which is compassion and respect for everyone. And this, this year, first of all, I have to thank Kristin Tebbs, she's in the audience, for really some great work that she did in connection to this program. She is our care coordinator, and she really fostered this partnership with the Southborough Senior Center this year. So every holiday, teams of classrooms create place mats for their holiday lunch, and seniors have been actively involved at NAREY. They have been engaged in book fair, pause for reading, Community Reading Day. They've also attended our band and chorus concerts. King Arthur Breadflower came in and gave a bread baking demonstration, and the seniors supported that, and they also were part of our Skyrise Plays. So it was a great partnership that we plan to continue. And Southborough Youth and Family, this year, coming up in May, we are going to, as part of Mental Health Awareness Month, Meredith Charles will be joining us for Drama Out of the Box to engage in grade-level Feelings Museum Assembly. So each grade level will have the opportunity to work with Meredith, and we've been in the planning stages with team leaders and with Southborough Youth and Family to bring this to our students. And this is, this aligns directly to our open circle curriculum and its lessons. So we're excited for that to be coming right after MCAS, so great time for that. So our goal two is NAREY students will demonstrate growth across all academic disciplines, including math, English, English Language Arts, Social Studies, Science, Technology, and Engineering. Growth will be based on multiple measures including. Growth will be based on multiple measures, including informal assessments, formative and summative curriculum-aligned common assessments, as well as MCAT's performance. And our first focus area is Curriculum in connection to Indicator Three in Vision 2020. So our professional learning communities are weekly meetings with targeted areas. Each grade level meets once a week, and we focus either on writing, math, writing, reading, and we are using work from our DataWise, aligning our scoring practices, looking at school-wide and individual data, and examining assessments at our, in our assessment inventory. And we've been working in connection to, in connection with our literacy specialist Dave Ling and our math coach Kathy Lizotte. So as I just mentioned, DataWise, one of our, one of our weekly meetings within the month is focused on DataWise. So this is a project from Harvard, and that supports educators in using collaborative data inquiry to drive continuous improvement of teaching and learning for all students. So this is a two-year grade-level professional practice goal, and it, as I said, it directly connects to our work within our PLCs as well as instructional rounds. And it's going deeper into analyzing the data to, that we'll use to drive our instruction. It's, there are eight different sections of the DataWise process, and we are just in our fifth section, and we will be continuing this for next year. Our other focus area is Curriculum, and that's connected to Indicator Three. So for science this year, NAREY has completed the implementation of three, of the three new science units, incorporating Earth and Space Science, Life Science, Physical Science, and Engineering Technology. Many of our staff this summer used their six hours of professional development to engage in summer work, unpacking science resources, planning lessons, and mapping out the year. Teachers also received updated instructional text this year, and one per class, one classroom per grade level is piloting the new lesson. We also created a fantastic science lab where all of our science resources are stored, as well as lab tables and resources. And our plan, we have our dissections coming up for Grade Four, so those are the cow's eye, the sheep's brain, and squid. So those are coming up for Grade Four, and we're going to move those, I think, outside to our outside classroom, so that students can have the opportunity to use that space while working on their dissections. So we're excited about that. Be a little more airy, we're thinking. During math, at our, one of our PLCs each month, we're working in collaboration with Kathy Lizotte, and NAREY grade-level teams focused during that time on student learning goals and collected and analyzed assessment data. We also had Greg Tang Junior come this year. This professional development opportunity involves students, teachers, and families. So that was exciting to have all three be able to gain knowledge from Greg Tang Junior. It was to complement our Invision program and work on the guidance documents. Teachers were able to participate in a forty-five-minute workshop with Greg that focused on problem-solving, and in, at the same time, that grade-level students worked to play games in connection to what the teachers were learning about. And then at night, families came to the Woodward School, and they were able to play those games as well. Those resources were left within the district and were able to utilize those in the classroom. So that was really nice, community connection between staff, students, and families. Staff, we also had professional development with Dr. Andrew Chen, and that focused on mathematical content. Our teachers experienced productive struggle as learners through rich mathematical tasks so as to enhance the experience that they provide to their students. This content workshop was to help teachers develop a deeper understanding of mathematical content so that they'll be able to facilitate student learning, to make connections between the concepts, and also find a renewed joy in learning math. And last, but certainly not least, focus area of technology. So we, and that's connected to Indicator Two. So at NAREY, we have what we call a laboratory. So we're very excited about this. Almost two years ago, the NAREY Library and Computer Lab joined forces to create our laboratory, which is library instructional technology, twenty-first century skills, and it all comes together in our laboratory. This, this defined space and instructional time has given students the opportunity to learn and work in streams, so that science, technology, reading, research, engineering, arts, and mathematics environment. So students not only continue to learn library and technology skills and standards, but they also work collaboratively as they research, problem-solve, and participate in the design thinking process. It is a ninety-minute period each week where two classrooms come together to work with Mrs. Wagner and Mrs. Brillis. And they are our dynamic duo who run our laboratory. And so we're really proud of it. It's, it's had a lot of success over the past two years, and we're looking forward to continuing that great work. And Mrs. Brillis and Mrs. Wagner put together a video to share with you of what laboratory looks like at the NAREY school. So we're excited to share this.
Three, three.
Wait, where's this one? Okay. Where's this?
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, no, no, no. Nine, two, three. I opened it. I opened it.
So I have some students here. Can you go ahead and introduce yourself, you guys?
Hi, I'm Radine, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, I'm Frances, and I'm in fifth grade.
So Frances and Radine, can you tell me a little bit about what you like about laboratory? Why you like coming?
I like the centers, and Lego Woody was really fun. Also, the workshops, you can learn a lot, and just sessions are just really fun.
I like to design challenges because you can design and build things that, well, you can create your own.
So you guys, do you think that we should keep going with laboratory?
I'm Tim Deloizio. I'm an educational support professional in one of our fourth-grade classrooms here. And library has been a great platform, our laboratory has been a great platform for us for a lot of skills that are needed in today's learning, specifically around problem-solving and figuring out how to do things and challenges that haven't really been explicitly taught to them before, which is really cool. And there's a lot of skill sets that go along with that. I've really seen the kids excel in these types of tasks in four areas. One, communication. We see kids working together and talking through problems, both educationally but also socially, using social dynamics and talking through with each other how to solve a problem, what steps they're going to take, and then actually starting to work on that problem and share responsibilities, and really do a great job collaborating, working together to solve a problem that is new to them, which is really cool to see, because problem-solving skills right now are definitely an area that our kids need to work on. And critical thinking plays a great part in that, being able to diagnose what the problem is, to see all the different steps that they need to go through to come up with a solution. And once again, working together to creatively come up with a unique solution to solve a problem. We see that in such an array of different tasks, from breakout EDU and really trying to solve puzzles together, complex things, to come up with a goal, all the way through creating stop-motion videos around projects around our library space, or building models of windmills with some of our Connects tools, 3D printing things that they've designed themselves in some CAD programming, just tremendous variety of things that kids are doing. And it takes all of those different steps to work through them, and it's really been wonderful to see them engaged for a long period of time on tasks in groups that is, quite frankly, in classroom, they can struggle with. So laboratory has been a great platform to do those things.
Thank you. There's lots to see at laboratory. So thank you for letting me share about NAREY and how we're connecting to our school program. Can you share?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Laboratory looks like a lot of fun.
It is highly engaging, and they are definitely using their problem-solving skills, and more importantly, they're, they're learning to be okay with mistakes and trying again and again to solve a problem or come up with different solutions. again to solve a problem or come up with different solutions. It's really exciting to see. Anytime you want to come in and see it, it's just, it's an exciting environment.
And is that something, is the video something that's shared with parents?
I'm going to post this online.
That's great. Yeah, because it's fantastic to see them engaging in all of that.
Is that collaboration something that you're trying to carry over into, you know, outside of Library Touring to regular classroom settings?
Absolutely. And what's nice about this is, so it's two different classrooms coming together. So they're making friendships, they're connecting with other students. And we're also moving forward this year, for next year, really beginning to tie it into the curriculum so that we're making those connections across the content areas as well. So the first two years, Mrs. Wagner and Mrs. Bruce designed the curriculum, so it had to be for Grade 4 and Grade 5. One team we have together is a 4th and a 5th grade classroom because we have odd number of classrooms. And that's been a whole other wonderful experience to have 4th and 5th graders supporting each other. But yes, the collaboration is definitely carrying over to the classroom.
Great.
I have a few questions, but one thing I just want to say is, because I have two kids, one in 7th grade and one in 4th grade. And I was just telling the other day, it came up in conversation with my daughter about middle school and how she asked me what it was like when I was in middle school. And I was telling her about frankly, all the horrible things that happened to most of us in middle school. And she was stunned that people were that mean to each other. And I think it is such a credit to you all. But I'm thinking especially at Neri right now because they, this whole choose kind and all this social emotional curriculum that you guys do, it was seeing the real, I've seen the real results of that as a parent. Like my older daughter who is in middle school now at Trotier, the kids at Trotier are so still, in general, so nice to each other and just good kids. And the idea of bullying and being unkind to people is just doesn't even cross a lot of kids' minds. And that's a huge testament to what you guys are doing with your social emotional curriculum. And I've seen it go, you know, through the years. And it just, what you all are doing, fantastic job at that.
It's the teachers. It's a shared philosophy and really trying to work, they work collaboratively together to make this happen.
But it is, you know, the whole choose kind initiative that you do at Neri is just fantastic. And I really do see it carrying over as a parent and to the older grades too. So I think that's fabulous. I love seeing all the social emotional curriculum. Can you talk a little bit more about that way? Are you doing that right now?
I did it, well, I tried it myself.
Fascinating.
It is fascinating. It took, it definitely, the teachers' feedback, so it's our behavioral specialists and our school psychologists at Neri who are working collaboratively with the other, with Woodward and Trotier teachers. The training was more intensive than they expected it to be. And we're okay with that because we really want to have success with this. So what it is, it's, so it's a biofeedback program. It's on a computer and there's, there are sensors and different scenarios that students are engaged in on the program. So the one that I actually was hooked up to was one that was, it's, and it builds over time as you, as you move through, it was a forest. And in the beginning, it was a black and white picture. And as you navigate through this forest, flowers start to grow, color starts to bloom, the sun starts to shine. And I can see by the data that Mrs. Matthews was the one who was working with me, my heart rate started to decrease because, oh, this is lovely to be in. And I, and so that, that was wonderful to see. And then the other one that I was on was a balloon, hot air balloon, which I love hot air balloons. And I selected this scenario. I thought, oh, this will be fantastic. Well, the closer it got to lift off and over some water, my heart rate, I couldn't feel it, but it was monitoring and demonstrating that, oh, I was getting a little anxious. And so Ms. Matthews and I were talking about, so what are some things that you're feeling inside? What's your heart rate? What is your heart feeling like? How are you? So it's getting students to recognize how their thoughts connect to their heart, their heart to their thoughts. And then pulling in some strategies in small group to help them to internalize that, transfer that. And so we're newly into this. We've only, we have a small group of, I think there are five students right now. We just started it last month, but we're already starting to see results. So it's exciting and it was funded by the Southborough Education Foundation.
Okay, is the goal, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to ask a question about that. Is the goal then to expand it to all students or just students going through transitions? Or just everyone?
No, all students. Yes.
Interesting. Thank you. You're welcome.
I have a few other questions.
Sure.
Just you talked about a lot of really cool stuff. One thing that you mentioned about the collaboration with community and parents and other agencies, how, I know one thing that, and now that I'm working too more often and, you know, it's harder to be a volunteer. And there are fewer volunteer opportunities as your kids get older. Do you, maybe all other principals can be in it too, but how, that's one thing I do hear from parents, it's like, well, how can I actually be involved in the schools? Because, you know, when they're little, it's like, oh, you can come here and read or you can, you know, do that. But as they get a little bit older, there is a lot of questions about how parents can still be involved.
I think, well, there are two ways that I look at involvement. And I think it's really important to have parent involvement, but that can look like going to our website or going to our Samor newsletter. And we try to post videos and post pictures and, and something like this we would post so that parents can get a glimpse into our daily activities, what students are doing. So that's one way to be indirectly involved in the learning process. But I will speak from, with a parent hat on, as students get older, they're, they become more independent learners and there isn't as many opportunities. But I have to say at Neri, teachers do offer opportunities for parents to come in and volunteer. I can speak to Mrs. Teb and Mr. Finneran's classroom. Do you want to share what you, you do a little bit about your volunteer for your work center?
Sure. Yeah, I think it's really, at Neri is an individual, you know, class by class, but in our room, we do have literacy and math labs. So we ask for seven parents to come in every week and it takes us 18 weeks. So parents drop share with the center that they're working on. And I know other teachers might have them come in, set up labs, science labs, you know, but it'll be a teacher by teacher as far as your individual teacher at Neri, but also the specialists. Mrs. Johnson in art does a, sends out an email for certain projects. And I know in the literacy lab as well. So we have, besides your home teacher, there are opportunities. It's just those emails. You can talk a lot about it.
And our science lab would not be the success that it is if it wasn't for our parent volunteers because there are so many materials in our science lab and it's really important to be able to keep a good inventory. What goes out, we need to make sure that we replenish. And they, we had parents come in at the beginning of the development inventory, all of our materials, so that we can keep an accurate record. And then they'll come in hopefully at the end of the year and help us to do the same thing. So there, that's a really important part. And as Mrs. Teb mentioned, in the Lit Lab, we have parent volunteers for our Puzz for Reading. So that's when our dog Zeke comes in and students get to read with Zeke. And we have parents and seniors this year, which was so nice from the senior center, come in and be able to support that. I think there's lots of opportunities, probably not as many as there are at the earlier primary grade levels, but definitely opportunities.
Anything else?
Just, the only other thing I want to say is there's just so, and I think I say this every time somebody chairs, that there's so much going on. And it is hard, you know, you say with the emails and the this and the that. Like I know Greg and I are going to talk later, but a little bit about communications and how we can, you know, as a district, maybe streamline a little bit. But I feel like this could be, I mean, not all parents are on social media, so I just feel like there's so many, even as a parent, like I read the Thursday Pacts and I read your emails that come out. But like some of this stuff is so cool, I feel like it should be highlighted in some way. Because, you know, I ask my kid, what do you do? Like all I see is her homework. But she does, so I see her studying for tests and that's pretty much it. So it's like hearing about this stuff on school community, I feel like we're really lucky to hear all this. And I wish more parents knew.
Well, it's one of the highlights of Library Touring this year, I think because it involved both 4th and 5th grade, there's a book, What to Do with an Idea. And it was launched off of that. And students using Tinkercad created their own idea, what it looked like. And then was, were able to design it and build it. And it became real. It brought that idea to life. And it was so exciting to see. So 257 different ideas all on display. It was just amazing. And so, yes, those are great things to be able to share and celebrate. I completely agree with you.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you. That was great. And that brings us to town meeting recap. Another successful town meeting. Anything you want to share? I mean, it's-
Budget's passed. We're rolling up to FY '20 already. I think it was, you know, a great opportunity for the town to explore their new idea of moving it to a Saturday. I'm not sure what the final outcome of the analysis will be from the town in terms of what they're going to do with that, but it was well attended. And I thought it went along quite quickly for the number of articles and citizens, articles that move forward. And I was obviously five for five pleased the budget's passed without a hold. And that included regional as well, so.
Quite a streak. Yeah, I thought it was uneventful from our school perspective and certainly appreciate the support from the town. Anybody else? Okay. All business. We have the Math School Building Authority Statement of Interest update.
So with that theme of moving along quite quickly, it was just about a month and a half ago that we submitted our Statement of Interest. We submitted two, actually three Statement of Interest, both, two of them at FIN, the roof and boiler and boiler replacement, and also the Trotier roof under MSBA's accelerated repair program. We did receive notification that of the 85 approximate applications, they narrowed it down to 47. And over the next three weeks, they will be visiting all 47 proposed funding sites. Our visit is tomorrow. They had a list of folks that they wanted to be present and reached out to Mark Purple. He adjusted his schedule to be there so he could speak to MSBA's questions about funding and support from the town. John Parent, who is, does amazing work as facilities director for the town, has really implemented a lot of energy efficiencies in our schools over the last couple of years. So he will be present to discuss those energy upgrades. That was a targeted area for MSBA. There's an expression up on the roof. And Clayton and myself and Greg and Brian Fantoni took a walk on the wild side and walked around the roof this afternoon, this morning. And that was fun going up that little ladder. And they will be conducting a similar tour tomorrow. So we're very much ready for their visit. It will take about an hour and a half to tour the facility. No appreciation for their selection process or narrowing it down. We feel that maybe because there are two projects that are proposed for FIN, that that was an interesting potential funding opportunity for MSBA. But we won't know what specifically the criteria was for the selection until tomorrow, if they share that at all. They then are moving along quite quickly. They hope to, at their June 26 meeting, identify those funding, those projects to be funded. And that will then move along quickly yet again. So we can anticipate that if we are one of the proposed funded sites, that we will go into engineering design as prescribed by MSBA. You might remember that earlier this year because we hadn't really dug or invested too deeply into what these proposed large capital project items would be in terms of cost to the town or to the school. We, through Brian Fantoni's great work, engaged the services of an engineering design firm to take a look at what those new 2020 prices would look like. And so we have current engineering design drawings, which we're hoping expedites us in the process a little bit. So we'll be sharing all that with them tomorrow. It's a two-man, two-person team that will be visiting the school. And as I said, we'll be touring. We have the maps, we have packets put together, booklets for them with all of the resources and all of the things that they're looking for. I did reach out to Mark after our conversation this morning. We've mentioned before that FIN is the only on-oil burner kind of heat source of the schools that we have in the community. And, you know, had some discussion about whether or not there were discussions at the town level that we weren't aware of that might include extending the natural gas lines. That's not the case, so Mark is prepared to address that as well. So fingers crossed, we'll see how it goes. And we're excited that they are moving this quickly along. Again, thank Jim for, you know, his work is, in terms of submission of the SOI, he has had that experience numerous times. And that knowledge helped us prepare the documents. One of the questions that I do really want to follow up on is, we're as delighted that FIN has been selected, really want to know what the criteria was so that we could adjust future submissions for Trotier. There are two funding programs that MSBA offers. One is the accelerated program. And question that I want to propose and we want to propose actually is whether or not it's too late to submit Trotier under that other funding program or whether we should just wait for the next cycle next year. Obviously, if both projects were funded by MSBA, that would put some pressure on the town as well. So, you know, maybe it's, it's good that one of the projects have been selected and we can, we can finish that. As I've mentioned before, it's been a while since Southborough has gone through the MSBA funding cycle. But we do enjoy a very good reputation with Massachusetts Building Authority for other projects we've done. And we do believe that that will bode well for us in the conversations tomorrow because they're very familiar with us. And we've had a good track record of coming in under budget and on time. So we'll have an update. You may actually get an email before our next meeting if we have additional information coming our way. But I would imagine 47 sites with a very limited staff to visit. If they really do spend two hours at each one and then analyze it, that June date is probably very realistic in terms of us getting some sort of response from them in June.
Ask a question. How many sites do they typically fund?
It depends how large the projects are and how much money they have. So if, you know, if they fund all roof projects and there are fairly significant amount of money involved in those, and that's their determination, they'll fund as much as they can until the money runs out. So it varies. If all of the submissions were boilers, they would probably do, you know, a larger, fund a larger amount of projects. And the money that they have varies every year. So past dollars expended is no indication of what they have this year.
Next item is the start time update.
So I'm going to ask Jen if she wants to share in this update. Jen Primack participated in the meeting as the representative from Southborough. I thought it was a very productive meeting. This really was just an initial update of the folks who have indicated that they wanted to be part of the refreshed renewed task force. And we were lucky to have the transportation consultant Skype in unbeknownst to us. He was sitting there waiting to go live and actually heard our conversations. And it was a pretty rich dialogue around concerns and interests and what we thought the obstacles were, what we thought the possibilities would be. So Griffin was very engaged in the, I think it was three hours that we actually ended up meeting. We had about an hour scheduled. There was an Alice evacuation drill at the same time. So Jen got to experience what Alice was like for the students live. So it was sort of a two-for-day for Jen. And it was a good exchange, good dialogue. Again, it was just, here's the preliminary information. I think we collectively decided that we, putting that out there was more, would be more confusing than if we waited for the final documents to be shared. more confusing than if we waited for the final documents to be shared with us. And so we mapped out sort of a plan going forward, but it was, it was a great meeting, I thought. And I'll turn it over to Jen.
I don't have too much more to add other than I thought, I thought it was a productive meeting, too. There was pretty good representation of a large variety of folks from administration, parents, teachers. And I just thought it was useful to, to get questions answered about the transportation piece, which is obviously a huge part of what's going to be going on. And just to know that the data's preliminary, that we're going to need to wait for additional data to come through. But that after that, we can really dig into the analysis and take a look at what the options are. And it's exciting. There are a lot of ideas and a lot of you there, actually.
And we were, we were happy to have you there. The report was very valuable and very much appreciated.
Do we know when the transportation report's going to be done?
The targeted end date was actually at the beginning of April, so we've passed that. So the revised target is the end of April. And really, the delay is getting all of the information that SBC, School Based Consultants, needs to have to make valid recommendations. And that's really their ongoing dialogue with NRT. And so they did reach out to us within the last couple of days, and we've reached back out to NRT. So we're still hopeful that we'll have it shortly after April vacation.
Just by coincidence, Jen and I and Katora and Kathleen Polichko attended an MASC workshop on Saturday about school start time. They had a panel with towns from around here that successfully did it. So it was encouraging. One of them was Acton Boxborough, which is kind of like us.
And they just newly regionalized K-12.
Right.
This year, or last year, I think. And, and SBC did their analysis.
Oh, really? Same company?
So they were one of our reference sites and Mascanomic.
So are they going to include how, in the report, how Acton Boxborough successfully did it, or at least reference it in some way? Because I mean, I'm super curious how they need to have it.
Well, it was pretty simple. In their case, they added buses and they paid about $750,000 to do it.
And the town vote, the two different towns each approved that?
Nope, they didn't have to do that. They got it out of E and D money, which is like a rainy day fund. Which apparently they had enough to do that for the first year, and then the second year the reimbursement kicks in, so it's not as bad.
How, when, how much, did it go down?
It's like, what is it, 70%? 75%?
It's 70% reimbursement rate now.
So it's a huge, so for them, it was a very big upfront cost? And then significantly less after that?
Yeah, I think, I think she said in year two, they were able to absorb it in the operational budget.
Interesting.
But they are also K-12.
Right.
So that, those variables, as we discussed at the meeting, impact significantly.
It was really complex though, I think, because they have school choice. So they have six schools and they have school choice, so any kid can go to any school.
Right.
So that must be fun busing.
It's not. We have that in Northborough, so I can assure you that it offers some challenges, too. But, yeah. Depends on the definition of fun.
Anyway, the whole thing was encouraging, because they actually did it. Who was the other one?
Melrose.
Melrose, yeah.
So I think that it's important to note, as we talked about in the meeting, that one of the things that is important to us is what we can do. Because for every district that they bring up as a compare, as a comparison, or someone who's successfully implemented this, you really have to dig into their own specific conditions. You know, so for Ashland, for example, they moved it about 15 minutes, I think. And they have probably seven buses or something like that.
Yeah, it was much simpler, yeah.
Yeah. And then middle school and the high school. So I, I'm very, you know, I, I take caution when I, when I'm quick to compare how they did it and how we did it. Because as we've said right along the way in this conversation, the conditions that exist in one community may vary dramatically from another. So it's difficult just to say we can duplicate what one community did because of the variables that exist within, you know, each community.
Right.
I think the other issue that was interesting that came up in, in this session, too, was the, was this notion of community buy-in, right? And I think we talked about this in the task force, too. And we were saying that we, the publicity and the marketing around how we engage, and this is going to be particularly important. I think Ashland, no, it wasn't Ashland, it was probably Acton Boxborough said that they had, they did, so they surveyed students and parents. And so they, they said the community was really supportive of this, ahead of, before, before they implemented the changes. And then there was a woman from the NADAC School Committee, I believe, that talked about how their efforts completely failed because precisely because they didn't involve the community at all, really, in that decision. They just said, here's what we're going to do. And so I think that was kind of an interesting message, too. And we're on the right track, I think, with the task.
And I don't think NADAC has been able to change their start time.
She said they failed.
No, she said it was about five years ago. It was so bad that they've had trouble even bringing it up again.
What towns have?
NADAC. Because they present pretty much what not to do at every conference that we have. And there are a lot of, as I mentioned to the task force, this, it's on the superintendent's listserv again, as it has been every year. And everyone's looking for that one right way to do this, because I think the discussion about whether it should or shouldn't be isn't really as much of an issue as how can we do this in a way that is widely received and cost-effective. The current, the only proposal in the report was add more buses. And I think the cost was almost, what, it was a million one or something like that for our district. So, but again, it's preliminary, and so we're all excited about taking a look at the final results after they do their work.
And that was the option, though, not adding 60 buses without making any changes at all to any of the other.
Right. It was almost a single tier.
So are they going to have several different recommendations that basically stand the, don't spend, barely spend any money to the most extravagant?
We gave them a blank slate. We were, we were cautious not to give them too many ideas because we didn't want to have their mind framed for them. So the hope is that we'll get many options.
And then are we going to have a combined meeting for the presentation of it?
So last year, when we, I think the fall, when we sort of authorized the funding, we did say that they would present to the combined meeting. We talked about that at one of our meetings, and that is still the hope. We have very few combined meetings left, and that would be June. If they don't have that data available, could well be the first combined meeting in September. Regardless, the conversations have always been whatever option is selected, there is an appropriate wait time for implementation. And so that, that would not happen in FY '20. So that was sort of clearly defined on the onset. So that would give everyone time for input, time for process, and then time to communicate what those changes would be for implementation.
Okay. Next up, superintendent's report to the committee, beginning with enrollments.
This is a brief. We've taken away all the FY '20 budget calendars, and that's why, you know, it's sort of like a breath, we're breathing a breath of fresh air, newly budgeted, approved. So we have the enrollments, no significant changes in enrollments, which is always delightful to see as we base our 20 budgets newly approved on enrollment. So that's great. The FY '19 monthly expenditure report is in your packet, and as always, would request a vote to approve until audited. We are very busy, I don't want to say positively, and being very positively planful for all of the big projects that we have underway, which include the Woodward driveway expansion. Steve and I had the benefit of walking the new process, complex, both the safety and the boundary line between Woodward. And we were with the project manager and with Mark Purple, trying to cite the fencing that would go in. And they do have the cutaway for the buses that will ultimately loop around. We're still on target to have that work in June. We're working closely with Karen Galligan. And we're using a combination, in this case, we're using all facility rental revolving funds, which we have purposely set aside, so we're well positioned for that. And then we do have a few other significant projects, the installation of the cameras in our facilities. We've just gone out for an update of pricing on those. And working very closely with Brian Fantoni for an updated price on the glycol flushing in our schools that we had talked about earlier this year. So we've got some great work to take place in a short period of time, but we're really positive and everyone's on track to make that happen. And, and that's the budget, and our facilities rental will support both of those. So it's good. And we just need to vote to approve until audited.
So I'll move that until audited, we approve the Southborough FY 2019 budget monthly general fund expenditure report as of March 31, 2019.
Here's a second.
What segment?
One by Roger, second by Jessica. Any discussion? All in favor? Ms. Nannus?
And then the approved budget, which you'll see often next week, in your packet, distribution only.
Educational policy, none at this time, apparently. Policy development, we have first readings on two policies.
So the first policy is homework. And this is the result of some work that was done a couple of years ago from a homework study group. The homework study group did a literature review, surveyed families, and basically looked at the existing policy and made sure it was aligned to best practices around homework. The policy subcommittee has been working on this this year and has developed some new homework guidelines that reflect the work of the homework study group. And this has been looked at from the principals, teachers, and this is the first read for the school committee.
I just, Greg and Katora and I have been visiting these several times this year. And I think, I really, I think we're all really interested in getting the school committee's feedback on this. And I'm glad that the principals and the teachers are very great in on this. And I think this is something that parents will also be really interested in. Like, you look at this, when you look at the weekly guidelines for homework time, it's going to be interesting to hear parent feedback on, you know, what they think of that. And, you know, I personally think that these have been well researched and well documented and, you know, thought a lot about. And I think that they're, I think they're great guidelines. And you'll notice that K through one, the recommendation is 20 minutes of shared reading. We're not, you know, and that's due to research. And I, I think a lot of people that, that has better experience with their kids in K to one right now. So I'm, I'm very, I'm just very interested in the general feedback on this.
So you're, when you say looking for school committee feedback on these weekly guidelines?
On just everything in this, the, the general?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of material here.
I'm sorry?
So you're saying on, on everything in this policy or some specifics you're, you're looking to maybe have some focus on? I mean, there's a lot of discussion in the policy subcommittees that we're not necessarily privy to.
Do you have any questions? Like, if you, if you think that if something jumps out at you, is something that, huh, that seems really different from what I thought homework was about, or what my family's experienced in the past has been with homework?
Well, I guess my question would be, here are some guidelines that have been put forth. Are they significantly different from what the guidelines were before this? I mean, is there, is this a slight modification? Is it a significant modification due to, I noticed in the, at the front of it, you know, when we're talking about, you know, one of the bullet points is manageable for students to complete with reasonable time and effort. Well, that seems certainly sensible. But I don't know what was there before. And I think there was another comment about that in just one of the, well, one of the descriptions in the later pages. So.
I think the, the, one of the major shifts is having homework guidelines articulated. So although we had a policy, we did not have a guiding document around providing families and educators with clarity around some of these homework practices in our district. So the, just articulating the guidelines is a significant change, and I think will help bring consistency in practice. And I think our teachers do an excellent job already, but this will provide some clarity for families and also help us make sure the policy's implemented consistently across our pre-K to late system.
So the significant item is the fact that these are now articulated, you know, as opposed to maybe not a major change, at least from what us, how this was administrated before, necessarily by faculty.
I think, I think the change also is that, I mean, with Greg said that they even exist because every, there's not necessarily standardization. I mean, every teacher's going to teach differently, obviously, but I think the hope is that there'll be more consistency with the type and amount of homework.
And I also think that the homework guidelines will serve as a catalyst to have conversations with faculty. So there's the document, and then there's the implementation piece and having conversations around, you know, the purpose of homework and making sure that there is consistent implementation. But a lot of professional learning that will need to take place in conversations with our educational staff around homework. So I think that will be a, a helpful tool to have when you have those conversations.
I'm just going to say that Greg and the principals and the teachers have done a ton of work on this, so thank you for that. There's been a lot of talk and feedback.
And Jessica, I agree that, that community input's welcome in terms of, this is the first draft and the purpose of having a first reading is to get input. I think the more input we can get, I think the better the policy will become.
It seems pretty evident that there's been a lot of work put into this just from the, just from the material that there are, you know, amalgamating kind of in, putting the policy, the draft of the policy together.
So to the principals, you're, you're all happy with this?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. Thank you for checking.
And then the second policy, first reading is J 270, students assigned to buses.
I'm sorry, before we do that, there's a bullet point, be assigned to help students. There's a comma there, I don't think it should be there. I don't know if we're bringing these up, tiny issues up, but. P apostrophe, yeah, thank you.
Which, where was that?
Third bullet from the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But actually, that's a good point. We should, who's, who wants to get feedback? You know, if we all read this for the next weeks or so?
If you actually can send the feedback to Nancy Visser. And then the second policy, J 270, is students assigned to buses. And again, the actual policy is quite simple and it speaks, it references Mass General Law. And we've separated the policy from transportation procedures and guidelines. A lot of these procedures and guidelines are not new. They've been practiced, past practice, but they haven't been articulated. So this document articulates what's been practiced so that there's clarity in what parents and families can expect. And also, it's a great tool for us to work with North Reading Transportation around what our expectations are for transportation services. So again, community feedback is very important and welcome. We, in the development of this, this policy, we looked at Mass General Law, we looked at other district policies, and we met with NRT. So we've had a lot of research and input that went into this development, policy development.
Again, Greg did a lot of work and brought this to the subcommittee, and it was very impressive how thorough it was. And again, the parent input is going to be interesting if you talk to other parents and find out, for example, some of it generated a lot of discussions on the first page. You see additional parents, various responsibilities of elementary students, kindergarten through grade three. Their, a parent's supposed to be physically present or clearly visible. That, that's actually, that hasn't been consistent from bus to bus. So that will be a change for some parents. Some buses require a parent to actually be there at the bus, and that's actually not very necessary. Wait from your house and say, I'm- Wait from your house and say, I'm here, and, which might ease a burden for some parents.
Okay. Thank you. That moves us to personnel items, distribution of the personnel report. Oh, sorry, we have distribution of approved policies, as well, in the packet. Personnel report, also in the packet.
Mary Ellen Duggan is not leaving us. She's just moving to a district level position. I know that's important for folks to know, because Mary Ellen has certainly contributed to our school community, and now she will be contributing to the districts, which include, to the district, which includes more schools. So she's excited about her new opportunity, and in keeping with practice, we allow our staff to take a leave, explore some other opportunities within the district, and then make a decision a year after the experience has been had.
Linda Brant is retiring.
Yeah.
Been around a while.
That's a big loss.
Congrats to her. Communications, I guess, not this month. Action on minutes of the open meeting on March thirteenth. Need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve. Southborough School Committee Open Meeting Minutes from Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay. Second. Led by Jessica, seconded by Roger. Any discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous? Bills and payrolls, we have, agenda items for next month, school choice, public hearing and vote. Any other suggestions for next month?
Might have a few updates on the things that we've talked about, start time, perhaps the SOI for Finn, add to them as we move forward.
Okay. And that brings us to audience sharing once again.
Christie, do you want me to mention Linda's?
Well, if you'd like, Keith.
I'd be happy to.
So it's good news to share?
It's great news to share. All right, so as part of our audience sharing, I would like to invite the school committee to an event on June fifth, the afternoon of June fifth, where the Trotter team and staff will be dedicating the performing arts wing to Linda Murdoch, the first principal of Trotter, and also the former principal of the Nary School. Her commitment to fine arts from her first day here has been unwavering, and even in retirement, she's continuing her work in the area, and this is going to be one of our ways of commemorating the twenty years of Trotter. Trotter's been open now for twenty years, and we thought that would be a great way to represent that milestone by, you know, dedicating the wing in honor of Linda. And she is incredibly honored about this, and working on all sorts of plans to make this a nice, a nice event for her. So it'll be the afternoon of June fifth, where we'll have a small ceremony after our whole school concert, which at this time, she's participating in in some way, shape or form. I don't know if there's going to be a guitar, ukulele, or what, but she will be involved in that, and then we will be doing a small ceremony after that, and refreshments and things like that. So it's going to be, it's going to be a great way to culminate the year on June fifth.
Good. So what time are you doing this?
Around three o'clock, as of now, but like the Oscars, we're trying to make it all flow, so I'd say three o'clock is, two forty-five is a good arrival time, after the buses leave, and we'll see how kind of everything comes together, and we'll probably get going by about ten of three.
And when's the concert?
It's in the afternoon, it'll be at one PM that afternoon on June fifth.
So it's during school.
If that's during school, that's going to be the whole school concert, all the students will be there, then we'll have dismissal at two twenty-five, kind of recollect, socialize, and then everyone will help with bus duty, it'll be a lot of fun, and then we can, and then we can start the ceremony shortly after that.
Great. While we're on Trotter, we had a very successful volleyball marathon in Anderson.
We certainly did. Yep, we raised over twelve thousand dollars for Trotter SOS, dozens of parents, talk about volunteer opportunities, it is one of the only ones, but we did have dozens of parents there, and they did enjoy getting their eyes on the old little school experience that brought back some memories for many, I had many a conversation about, I remember when, so it was, it was, it was a good day, and we had over, I think we estimated about three hundred students still there at eight PM.
Wow.
I was exhausted, but they were, so they were ready, they could have gone for another couple of hours.
They seriously could have.
They could have, yeah, you were there, yeah, yeah. They definitely could have, and I think some were disappointed that we started taking down the nets while they were still playing. Great day.
Very good.
Thanks for mentioning that.
All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Jessica, did I hear?
I'll move, we adjourn.
Okay.
A second.
Led by Roger, seconded by Jen, all in favor. We are adjourned.